Okay, let's call a subcommittee meeting on.
Three thirty seven.
Three forty seven, thank you. For order and first order of business, I guess, would be amendments. So would you like to start? Or is there discussion to open this?
Well, I would just like to say, I think, just by the sheer volume of folks that came to testify for on two different days, it's very plain that the homeschool community are not in favor of this bill. In fact, based on some of the testimony and I reviewed the handouts that we were given, the homeschoolers weren't even consulted when these issues, when this issue came forward. And one of the biggest issues, well, one of the biggest issues that came forward also was this idea about communication. So I find it really odd that, well, on one hand, we need more communication, but you're not communicating with the group that is going to be affected by these changes. So what I did, and I worked bipartisanship with Representative O'Neill, and we came up with an amendment that basically does two things. First is it adds legislators and senators to the Home Education Advisory Council. I was surprised to learn that we don't have a seat here. So we don't know what's going on within the homeschool community. So it calls for two members of the House, and House Ed specifically, and one member from Senate Ed, to be on this advisory council. And the other section creates a study committee to look at our homeschool statutes and just sit down and just to really discuss with the stakeholders what's really at issue here. And if we need to bring forward legislation, it would be from that point where everybody's been involved in the discussion. Everybody knows what's at stake, what's trying to be accomplished. And that's simply what it does. Just try to bring everybody to the table to find out what's really at issue here.
Would the study committee, excuse me.
Oh, no, no, that's okay.
Would the study committee be similar to the study committee that worked on the special ed, with that which you have in the special ed revision?
You mean an ad hoc committee, or is that?
No, no, it wasn't.
It was, the ones that worked on the special ed, it wasn't, it was a, I can't remember what the word is. It ended up being, it was not a formal committee, and then at the end, it was finished when the legislative, I can't even talk this way, the legislative session ended, and then it turned into an ad hoc committee, which is not really a formalized committee. No, this is a formalized committee with members that are listed, yeah, well, I made some copies anyway, because I knew that there were going to be people that were going to be, and a lot of the folks that are listed here are people that are from the various organizations that came and testified to try and make sure that, again, everyone that had something to say about it would have a seat at the table, the various homeschool organizations. And that way, they would be able to talk with their members and bring their issues forward. Yep. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Can we just take two minutes?
Sure, sure.
Who's like to read?
No, that's okay.
Do you need details?
Sure, I thought I'd given you.
You did, but I.
Okay.
So Representative, do I understand correctly that the commission would be separate from the advisory council?
Yes, yes, two separate, two separate entities. In fact, the advisory council does have a seat in the subcommittee, not in the subcommittee, but in the, in the committee itself to look at everything. Because you've got school administrators, you've got Home Education Advisory Council, School Boards Association, Homeschool Coalition, the Christian Home Educators Association. And these were the major associations that came and groups that testified. So that way, these, I envisioned are the major organizations.
And just to clarify, these two provisions, adding legislators to the advisory council and setting up the study commission, replace the bill and are the entire bill?
Yes, because it seemed that the, most of the people that came to testify, again, were very concerned that they weren't consulted, first of all, and that they were wondering, you know, why this needed to get done, why, why the change. And that way, I felt by having this committee, by looking at what the statute said and getting their input, that perhaps we can come up with a solution that everybody can live with. And that's what I'm hoping will come out of it. Because I think being excluded from the discussion, I think, probably did more harm than anything else. So let's bring everybody to the table, what are the problems, how can we solve the problems? Take a look at what other states are doing with, with homeschoolers. We received a lot of information from folks about what other states are doing with homeschoolers. How did they handle this type of problem? Is there a way to handle? What do the homeschoolers have to say about this problem? They might have a solution. We don't know, because, again, they haven't been brought to the table to even discuss what the problem is. So I just figured that this would be a good way to take a look at the issues, and not just this one particular issue, but to look at all the homeschool statutes and make sure that we're doing the right thing, and to make sure that their voices are being heard and their concerns are being met. Because they might have concerns about other issues that we don't know about, because the lines of communication between the legislature and the homeschool community, they really don't exist. So let's bring them to the table, let's bring everybody to the table, find out what the problems are, and come up with a workable solution we can all live with. And that's the intent of this legislation.
Representative Casey, you've got a question.
Can I comment on this?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
It should be clear from the questions that I asked during the hearing that I don't believe that we have a problem currently in the state with respect to homeschoolers. And a lot of the comments or suggestions that were made are really anticipating that there might be a problem at some point in the future. I would just assume kill the bill, but I think that this might provide a compromise, and I could live with this. I think that, you know, notice, we even heard during the hearing of a woman, she happens to live almost in my neighborhood, and she notified the superintendent's office, I believe, that she was homeschooling her kids, and then the local elementary school, which there's thirteen in Nashville, but the local elementary school called and said, "You need to register your kids," and there was a lack of communication there and some of those things. But I think that, so even if you set up a process, there may be some problems along the way. I think that it would provide a compromise. The other thing, too, with respect to the second paragraph in the notification in the plan, I'm sorry, the plan, there was a question as to who that would apply to. Does it apply only to the development of a plan when it's for homeschooling? Would that apply only to families that have never homeschooled before, or would it apply to a new student who is entering the program? What's the depth of, depth required in the plan and those type of things? And I think that there's just a lot of leeway, as it's written here, and I would rather, I think all of us as legislators can understand how it's something that may be intended, even in the best intended legislation, if there's any open-ended issues, if there's not a lot of specificity. Oh, that's a big word.
Yeah, for Monday morning.
There's not a lot of specificity here, and I think that it would really do well to study it. So as much as I think that I don't see a problem, I can live with this study.
Other, other comments?
Well, at the, at the point that you consider it appropriate, I do have another, an alternate amendment for us to consider that addresses some of the logistical issues that were brought up in testimony.
All right, let's take a look at it. Any objections?
No, 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 we're all, now we're all ready.
Get everything on the table.
Do you have an amendment, Paul?
I do. You're welcome to have it now, it's certainly present in the executive session if I wasn't to.
There's another amendment coming in?
Well, you know, this is, Tim, and since I had the work done, I'd certainly like to have a third at least in the executive session if not.
At the session, Paul, or is it?
It makes no difference to me, actually, you guys aren't at the table if you don't want to. It's a matter of a vote on the exec.
Are there enough copies for?
I just took whatever they sent me, they usually send fifteen of them.
I only got.
They sent three.
Oh, three? Three, oh.
Wow, there you go.
I didn't even look at it, sorry.
Okay, so now we've got another one to look at.
So, you know, on the issue of communication, I definitely think that's an important question. I think there were, there are two issues, two different areas of communication that we're talking about. One was whether there was good communication around the creation of the bill. I think that the sponsor of the bill felt she was putting something back in place that had been in place for, I think, for the extent of time that homeschooling had, was in place until '06. But then there's the other area of communication that the bill was intended to improve, and that was the nature of the communication between the homeschooling parent and their local school district about curriculum options and resources. And the bill was designed to foster that communication. So in looking at the amendment and considering the testimony that was brought before us on the two days that we held hearings, where they certainly had a lot of open communication, I tried in this amendment to address some of those concerns. Now, the notification prior to commencement of such a program, I'm going to come back to that one, because there's still an issue about that that I think we can fix. The year we noticed is still in place in letter B. What is removed was the idea of notification on the anniversary date of implementing the homeschool program, because as people rightly pointed out, it would lead to a logistical nightmare of a whole variety of dates of notifications. So that's gone, and it's just by the first day. And in Roman five, people were concerned about the word draft plan, because they thought that there was some opportunity then for maybe the school districts to make changes to that plan. So the word draft was simply dropped, so that it becomes a planning document, which should imply the flexibility that we all believe the sponsors and the homeschooling parents should be part of a homeschool program. So back to the prior to commencement, the reason for tightening up the thirty-day notification is that there have been instances reported of people using the homeschool identification to dodge truancy issues. So if someone is seen not in school, and identified by a truant officer, and the family says, "Oh, I'm homeschooling, but I just haven't notified yet," that's a loophole that needed to be addressed. But on the other hand, the homeschool family said that having to notify prior to commencement made it impossible for them to take a child out in a situation they considered an emergency situation. So I was trying to communicate with DOE about what would be a reasonable time span, and just, just this morning, we, Roberta, I want to ask you this question. What did you say about how long it takes for a child to be truant?
Twenty.
Twenty days. So we thought perhaps this could be amended to say, within five working days of commencing such a program. So a parent could take a child out in an emergency, but we could close that truancy. Now, the issue about how often or which parents had to submit a plan? Roman five does say, prior to the initial year of a homeschool program, a parent shall provide to the department a plan. In my mind, that suggests that someone who's already homeschooling would not have to submit the plan. It would be anyone starting a new plan. It seems to me also, I know the question came up about whether, you know, if you're homeschooling one child, do you have to submit a plan for the second child? If that needs to be more carefully spelled out, it certainly could be in this language. Does a homeschool program mean that the parent has a program for all of their children or just one child? You could discuss that and progress if you think that was important. But I guess I want to come back to the larger issue of why, why keep an amendment that includes a plan? As I look through the national agenda for the homeschoolers, it's clear to me that their goal and intention is to remove all regulation. And I'm concerned, although I really, I appreciate Representative Carson's proposal that we study the statutes and build something together, I am concerned that we might be entering that dialogue with an unstated assumption that no regulation is going to be acceptable. And I think that that's a problem. I do believe that asking for some plan and seeing that a parent has the ability to assemble a plan is a reasonable expectation. I think one thing that would be helpful for us in thinking about this is to see what the rules were when planning was part of the program, and has copied those rules for us. And in fact, Chris Hamilton also gave us an outline of the rules, and it, you know, it was a list of subjects to be taught, the name of an established correspondence school if used, the name of an established commercial curriculum provider if used, a table of contents, a list of textbooks. I mean, it's just not an insurmountable hurdle. Okay, so here are the copies of, the full copies of the rules. And by the way, new rules are just now coming before Jailcar to catch up with the fact that the note, the curriculum was, the curriculum plan was removed. So there's a bit of a lag there in the way we're going to address this. So I guess who was asked, I, you know, I'm just opening it up to discussion and questions.
Did you have any?
No.
Any comments? I want to take a couple of minutes to look through these rules.
What I just said about Jailcar was that there are new rules coming before Jailcar now, which are in response to the removal of the requirement for a curriculum plan. Roberta, could you, could you say more specifically what would be in the?
The Home Education Advisory Committee and I worked at revision of the rules, presented them to state board, and they reflect 406, the change in the legislation from the last time.
So that's actually what this is. These are the proposed new rules.
That's what I said, your initial proposal.
Sorry, I misspoke. So what Chris Hamilton gave us in testimony was what the rules were when there was a plan requested.
Ms. Penny, then, these reflect the legislative change that was made in 2006?
Correct.
Are we supposed to talk about what it does for children? As opposed to what is bothersome to homeschooling parents? Because I haven't heard that much dialogue about that.
I don't understand what your point is.
Well, my point is, is that a lot of the conversation that we've had henceforth has been about what, what this does, what, what this requires of homeschooling parents. I haven't heard anybody say that anything that has been proposed in any of the, in the bill or anything would actually hurt children as opposed to benefit them in some possible way. And so I'm wondering if we should direct our attention more towards, as, or keep our thoughts, trying to center our thoughts on what's best for children, as opposed to what's considered a problem for, for lack of a better word, a problem for the parents of homeschoolers. So, I mean, I really hope that we have that, that balance, because in my opinion, it is very important that we do think about that as we move forward, trying to come up with some amendment that represents that balance. So we had, I had one conversation, to my knowledge yet, about whether or not anything in the bill itself was going to benefit children in some way or hurt them. And it certainly doesn't hurt them to make sure that there's an interface between school districts and homeschoolers. And in fact, in those, those may be possibly, and I think quite clearly, very rare instances where there are, there's malfeasance on the part of the homeschoolers, very rare. Given that homeschoolers are doing by and large a great job, what, what can we do to make sure that that doesn't happen? I just thought I would say that, because as I'm looking at all of this, it's more about homeschooling parents and less about children.
Representative Carson, followed by Representative Price.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is my understanding, after sitting through almost eight hours of testimony over two days, that this is about children, this is not about parents. The parents would like to have, in many instances, the same flexibility to teach their children that the public schools have, in that, yes, they have a curriculum, but oftentimes they deviate from this curriculum. And the parents would like to be able to do the same thing. They feel that there are things that are being discussed, or issues in the public school that are not addressing their children's issues. So that's why they're pulled out of school, and they want to homeschool. I wish you could have sat through the testimony like I did, and listened to the parents speak very passionately about how important it was for them to be able to teach their children, and what they are teaching their children. So I respectfully disagree with you. This is not about the parents, this is about the children, and these parents who believe that they can best teach their children. So, again, I just would respectfully, totally disagree with you. Again, my issue with bringing this forward is bringing everyone to the table. That didn't happen when the original legislation was passed. Let's hear from the parents. They're the ones that are educating the children in the home. Let's hear what their issues are, because we, we heard a lot of things, I mean, after sitting there, again, that really didn't even relate to the bill, that they had issues that they wanted addressed. And again, that's why I brought this particular piece of, of this amendment forward, is that it brings everybody to the table.
Representative Price.
Thank you. From my perspective, I continually ask what test scores were. I mean, I look at the, there's a, I think, a pretty strong accountability piece at the tail end, and it's the evaluation process. Show me where there is a problem, whether the student's not performing accurately or well grown. Sufficiently, or up to grade level, or, I'm not an educator, so I'm struggling to find those words. I haven't found that there is a problem. And I think that anecdotally, as you ask parents to take time and do a plan, and I'm not saying it's not a good thing, are you taking time away from the children's instruction so that, you know, what is best for the children in that respect? And I'm just throwing that out, I have no knowledge, one way or another, that's true. I think that if the committee is, wants to move forward with this amendment that Representative Brousse has brought forward, I would like to see a lot more specificity, I'm going to use that word again, in here, and specifically, I would rather help us drive the bus and find out if something is written in the rules that isn't what we all intended. Who does it apply to? New families, new children, what's the scope of plan? I want it clear that there's no approval needed. I mean, we've heard that there was an individual who testified who said that they submitted a few plans, and the plans were rejected, and this was in the, within the last couple of years, when there wasn't even a requirement to have a plan, and certainly not even needing a plan, the plan wasn't approved. There is no requirement that there needs to be a code. I'd love to see all that detail. I still believe that a study is a better option to go from micro-study.
May I ask the department a question? Yes, my question is, is on, in the testing, where do, where normally do the tests take place? Are they required to be at the school?
If they take the New Hampshire NCAP, then they would be with their regular classmates, peers in that situation. If they take a test of their own choosing, it can be at their home.
And who proctors those tests?
What has happened is the parents do.
Parents proctor the tests?
Correct. I mean, that's the regulation, is that not true?
That's not entirely true.
But it is, it's commonly accepted practice.
No, not really, no, no.
Oh, who does, there's no, there's no legislation, there's no legislation that says that it needs to be a proctor. Some states have that, but it needs a certified teacher. New Hampshire does not have that.
Right, I'm just talking about practice.
Practice, okay, but in, but the legislation says, doesn't say a certified teacher, certified test.
So the legislation requires, there's no legislation on the books that requires any proctor?
Right, it doesn't say a certified teacher or proctor.
Parents can proctor the test?
That's not true.
But I'm not suggesting what practice is, I'm asking what the law is.
Right, the, if the law or the rules, excuse me, says that, I can't remember what's the law, the rule says, I think it's the rule says, say that it has to be according to the directions of the, of the test manufacturer, the test producer. So if Stanford requires that there be a third person, or it be done in a classroom, where there be four children who, minimum, then that. Or a certified. Or a certified teacher, or, so it's the test manufacturer that, according to the rules.
Okay, so can I ask a further question about the testing? I know it's a little bit off-subject, but if we're going to talk about results, I need to know. So can, for example, an educational consultant be one of the proctors?
Sure, sure, as long as they meet the requirements of the individual company that is putting the test out, so Iowa Basic, or Stanford Achievement, or any one of your nationally-accepted standardized tests that a homeschooler may use, usually requires that that test proctor be certified to provide that test. And in most cases in the state today, you'll have homeschooling parents getting together and either hiring a proctor to give a group of kids that standardized test, or providing one of the members of the group to be certified. We've had long discussions about that, in order to be able to have integrity in the test, and to make sure that there's no conflict of interest in providing a test.
Or proctoring.
For proctoring.
Yeah, that's been my concern.
Yeah, yeah, I've, I've never seen, you know, a parent, and I've dealt with hundreds of them, ever insist that they not allow a kid to be tested by a proctor that is certified or.
But my concern is, is that with the number of homeschoolers that, and I don't mean to diminish the capacity of homeschoolers and all that, but it's a concern to me, it's the capacity of homeschoolers and all that, but it's a concern to me as a legislator, when I look at the results of the test. And I know that, for example, the education consultant is the, is the employee of those parents, that there isn't to me a kind of a push-pull for the kind of integrity that I think is necessary when there's an off-site test given.
It's allowed, I'm not sure they do it, it's allowed.
And not saying that, it's, I have to think of it in terms of homeschooling.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I'm not sure that's what happens today, but it is allowed.
But it is a concern because there is, that, that, that educational consultant is in fact the employee.
That's easy to fix, by the way.
Exactly, but.
It's very, this doesn't fix it, but that one's easy to fix.
But if we're going to act as if everything that we see in terms of results are in fact as they really are, I, I need to feel more comfortable with the process.
Mr. Tenny, do you have a comment?
I did, and that is, that is the purview of the test giver and the tests that are bought by home education people. So it's not what we have initiated as a state, it's what they have done professionally about their tests. And there's a range of what they accept. And there are groups that you can buy that from that do not specify, that it should be given by a certified test giver. That's a fact, but maybe not the practice.
Representative Carson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to point out the exchange that we just had, I think is a perfect reason why we should seriously consider my amendment. There are a lot of questions here about what's actually going on that we don't know. And by having this committee, we can sit down and we can discuss with the homeschoolers, find out exactly, well, what's happening out there in the homes? What do we need to do as a, from a policy point of view to make sure that things are being done correctly? Right now, we don't know. We don't, because we have not been part of the discussion. And that's why I created the study committee and bring everybody to the table. We can sit down, we can discuss this. Granted, I think in reference to a comment that Representative Brous made concerning that there are parents that want no roles, no nothing. And, and I agree, I think that was very plain from some of the testimony, that there are some people out there that just don't want anything, leave me alone, stay away from me. But I would like to think that the vast majority of people that came to testify, to testify were very concerned about what was happening. And they want to come to the table and they want to sit down and talk with the state through the Department of Education and with the legislature about what they're doing with their children. And what's happening and what do they see needs to be done? We don't know because we haven't talked to them. So let's create a vehicle where we can sit down and talk with these folks.
Representative Price, I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No, I'm also, I'm also. Thank you. Is I take a look at this legislation, there's really two pieces, and one's notice and the other piece is the plan? And is it everyone's intent here, this, in this subcommittee, that the plan would only pertain to new families? Families who have never homeschooled before? Is that the intent of everyone here?
That's my opinion.
Kim, I see two shaking their head over there. Kim, is that your intent too?
I'm thinking about it.
Okay. Because if I look at this, my question, my next question is, how many families begin homeschooling who have never homeschooled before every year? Roberta, do you know?
I don't know, the 4,599 parents, I would assume that probably a quarter or 20% are new to it. But there's maybe, may be able to, to tell.
It's extremely hard to even guess how many families that translates into.
Yeah.
Because we don't, the state doesn't keep track of it by families.
So nobody, because I guess where I'm going with that is that I would expect that the number of families would be small, that's just my expectation, and I could be totally wrong. But if that's true, that it's, we're intending that it will only apply to new families, I don't see the harm in maybe taking a little bit of time to take a comprehensive look at it. That would address the plan piece. If we have a problem with the notice piece, maybe we can, you know, make some small amendment on notice and, and then just take a look at, at the rest of it. I just want to throw that out. I mean, what are we really talking about and is there a problem with taking a little bit of time and looking at it?
But just before I call on you, I got a little confused. Ms. Tenny, you said there are 4,999 families or students?
Students.
Four, five, nine, nine is what I heard. Forty-six hundred?
There are, 4,599.
Okay, but that's students, not families?
Oh, six, oh, seven, correct.
Because we don't track families, we track students.
Correct.
Thanks for the clarification.
Are these students given student identifier numbers?
No, they are not, but if they do take the NECA or they do take dual enrollment courses, then they do get a student identification.
So, may I?
Go ahead.
So if, say they go to kindergarten and first grade and the parent at that point says, okay, I want to pull my, my child out, I'm not happy with what's going on in the school. That student, the day they showed up for kindergarten, they were given a student ID number.
Correct.
And that number expires when they're pulled out of the public school system?
Well, it's just not used in that period of time.
Can I follow?
Go ahead.
So are they then, if, after maybe being homeschooled, grades, say, one through eighth, they're going into high school now, and the parent decides at that point they want to put them back into the public school system, will that same number pick up?
Well, my sense is that it would, but you know, student identification numbers are a new process. I would think they would just pick up.
Okay, so that would be another point to look at. And Mr. Chairman, the, the comments that Representative Ross made about the truancy issues, I, I am concerned about that. I, I think that is an issue that needs to be, to be addressed as a loophole. And I think one of the other loopholes, and I think really it was the crux of legislation, that these kids are being pulled out and they weren't being educated. And they were going back into the public school system, and then the school system is having to spend extra resources to get these kids caught up. And I think it's important to bring the homeschoolers to the table because they're immersed in this, this culture of, of homeschooling and they talk with other school, homeschool parents, and they might have a solution here other than a mass, because the way I look at this, to me, it's, after being in the military, it's kind of like a mass punishment kind of thing, where maybe two people are doing something wrong, so we're going to punish everybody. Let's see if there's a, if there's the homeschool folks have a solution. How do you deal with parents that you know have pulled their kids out of school but aren't educating them? Do you, what do you do? Is there a solution that you might know of within the homeschool community? Again, we don't know because we haven't talked with them. So.
May I dovetail on your question when you, if any of the homeschoolers would like, if you don't mind, then if the chairman does allow me. The question that she just asked, but further than that, is there any requirement that somebody who homeschools their child become affiliated or work with? Any organization that tries to?
Like a support group or? There's, there's no requirement, but it's very rare, extremely rare that you would find a, a family that would refuse or not want to become part of one of the major homeschool support organizations because there's so much resource there, so much knowledge, so much help that they get.
Yes, thank you. So, but my, I guess that you know, because if they don't contact you.
Right.
Do you go to the schools and ask how many kids are being homeschooled to try and capture those people yourself?
Yeah, well, don't forget, the school districts are not the only, by law, permitted participating agent, right? Most of the parents today use non-public schools, the available non-public schools as participating agencies. I shouldn't say most, but a large number. And Roberta probably, I don't know if you have it with you, Roberta, but the statistics that show how many families use the local school district, resident school district as their participating agency versus a non-public school. I think we have, because they report numbers today.
We have the agencies that presented, but I do not have that information.
That number, okay, so the, the, the homeschool support groups today, the biggest of which is NHHC and CHEN, represented on HEAC today.
Like that was too many, what is?
I'm sorry, the New Hampshire Homeschooling Coalition and Christian Home Educators in New Hampshire, the two biggest homeschool support groups represented in HEAC today. They offer support to homeschoolers across the board, right? So it doesn't matter who they choose as their participating agencies. So, and by the, by the grapevine, you know what parents are and are not availing themselves of, help from one of the homeschooling organizations. I, for one, because I'm an attorney, get to hear of a lot of situations of parents that do or don't. And by and large, you know, in, in the 20 years we've homeschooled my family, I can tell you it's a handful of people that, that don't. And the reasons they don't may be because of schedules or whatever the, the reason is, but it's, it's a very small number.
Representative Carson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to, to add on to, after sitting through all the testimony, one of the things that struck me was that the communication within the homeschool community itself, almost every parent that got up to speak talked about talking with this one and talking with that one. So I, I think it's an informal network of parents that literally talk to each other. And if there are problems, they pick up the phone and they know who to call on having a problem with this. Well, how do I handle this? What's the best way to teach this? I, I think there's an incredible amount of communication that's going on here. And again, we don't really know about it because we haven't really been involved in the process. So I don't think communication from the homeschool side is the problem. I think there needs to be a bridge between the, the state, and I mean, that means the Department of Education and the legislature, with the homeschool parents. So we can sit down and we can listen to what their concerns are and come up with a reasonable solution. Is everyone going to be happy? No, because again, and that refers to Representative Ross's comments, that there are some folks out there that just say, stay away, we don't want you here. But I believe that the vast majority of people are very reasonable. They want to have the opportunity to talk with the legislature about things that they believe need to be done. So let's give them the opportunity to do that before we enact anything.
Yes, ma'am.
Let's see, a couple, a couple of things. I think, I think Representative Carson is on the mark when she thinks that, when she says that she believes most homeschool parents would enter this dialogue with good intention because as was said to me, it reflects badly on the homeschool program when there are people who abuse the system. So to find ways to solve that for kids' benefit, as Representative Casey has said, I, I think it's important. I, I think I, as we talk, I see a lot of potential emerging in these two amendments so that we could go forward with this plan. The head of the Christian Homeschool Group in New Hampshire said three different times in testimony that this plan was, did not represent a burden. And also, we had ample testimony that of the many issues and problems that came up, this amendment doesn't address all of those issues and problems, and I would agree with that. So I think that it would be very fruitful, very productive for us to go forward with this minimal plan request with more specificity, as Representative Price is suggesting. I don't have any problem with getting very specific language in here. But also putting in place a commission that could review the statutes and consider some of these problems that, that administrators are bringing to us with concerns. We do have administrators coming forward and voicing concerns.
Representative Price, if you want to speak.
Yeah, I, I, I just wanted to talk here for a minute about what happens with that plan once a plan is done. Because the last thing any of us want is to create a lot of busy work, but all of a sudden, and, and creating a plan for children's education, I'm not saying it's busy work, but you, you are asking people to go through a process that may in fact end up in someone's desk drawer. And I think that certainly two of the three of you on that side of the table have been educators before so that you know that as you do an outline, perhaps for a year of study, that the outline becomes filled in as you get closer to the time. And I just want to make sure if we're going to go through this, that something's going to happen. And maybe that's something that happens is just had in the parents' thing, the parents who have never homeschooled before are thinking about the debt that might be required as they go through the year. But is there going to be a benefit? That's the discussion I'd like to have right here. Just want to make sure there's going to be a benefit and that it's not just going to be busy work. I'll use that again.
I'm interested in, in your, excuse me, are, are you interested in the, the whole idea of busy work? You know what might be helpful as we pursue this whole idea of the planning? To take a look at what has been submitted, just one or two, to, to see the kind of specificity, your word, the kind of specificity that homeschoolers have traditionally done on their first time out. Just for my own curiosity, to satisfy my own curiosity, I'd like to see that. And maybe DOE could conceivably come up with just an idea of a plan. Is it truly a skeletal plan? Which I think, based on my teaching performance, was the best thing to start the year with. And as Representative Price said, you fill it in as you get closer to the time when you're going to be doing whatever it is you're going to be doing. Or does it demand much more clarity and crystal balling? Because you're going to be missing teaching opportunities if you lock yourself in. Okay, I'm not going to discuss any more educational philosophical views. But I, you know, I would just, if you could, Ms. Tenny, bring in just one or two, or if, if you have it, email it to us, whichever.
I probably don't have it on email, but I, I would, could go through the files and I would ask that, I work with some people on the advisory council, maybe we could do a couple of representative groups. What's been presented.
That might be helpful to clarify the idea of the planning aspect of this. Representative Ross, you have something?
Well, just to respond, I, I see two benefits. One is certainly having the parent go through the exercise of, of developing a plan and gaining awareness of what's involved in making a plan and what the resources are, having to know what the resources are that are available. And the second was, not that there would be approval, but I think the department testified that it would encourage communication with whoever they submit that plan to, who could look at it and say, well, have you considered this resource? Have you considered that Audubon has programs for homeschoolers? Do you know X, Y? Do you know about these two organizations that are there with resources to help you? So I, I think that both of those are benefits of developing a plan.
Representative Carson.
Thank you. My question is for Ms. Tenny. When a homeschool parent notifies the department that they're going to be homeschooling a child, do you send them anything, any, like, you know, whatever, you're homeschooling your pet, your child, here are a list of available resources for you to get in contact with? Do you do that?
Let me come back to something that you said earlier, and that is that I would welcome legislative communication with the homeschool advisory committee. It will be, it would be interesting and I think very informative to have legislative people a part of that. But I respectfully disagree about whether or not the department knows what's going on with homeschooling. We have, we spend a lot of time, I do, the commissioner, Mary Heath, has come to the HEAC meetings. It's an important organization in the Department of Education, and we listen carefully to what their concerns are. I, I find it an extremely good organization in terms of helping us to understand what will help them. And in terms of what I do when I talk to parents, I often refer them to the advisory group, different groups online. And I say, you can get a lot of information here, you can get a lot of information there. And we also suggest that they go to their district because we really want people to be closest to where they are, where they live, because that way resources are available to them and everybody then can communicate together. We take up, what I spend a lot of my time is, is brokering, you know, working with people who are having trouble and trying to figure out what that trouble is so that they don't have that trouble. Sort of greasing the, the whole apparatus for them and helping them to be able to cope with problems.
Sure, go ahead.
So is there a formal line of communication that exists within policy that says how this communication is to take place? Or is it more of an informal type of discussion between the DOE and homeschoolers? What I'm saying is, right now, I mean, in, in the, well, we're looking at a number of amendments, that they can notify either that they can notify either the Department of Education, the principal, the superintendent, non-public schools.
The superintendent.
So there's a number of people here that homeschoolers can talk to when they're going to pull their children out of school. But my question, again, is to looking at the Department of Education and saying, "Okay, we've notified you that we're pulling our child out of school. I don't believe they really need to give you a reason why, they're just pulling their child out of school." And that there's a formal response from the Department of Education. "Yes, we understand you're homeschooling your child. Here is a list of available resources to get you started on providing the best education you can for your child." And that's giving them the names and the numbers of homeschoolers, perhaps in their area, the various organizations, just to help them get started.
We don't give them the name and address of other homeschoolers in their area, because we may not necessarily know that. But we do give them the information about the affinity groups that they have, so that they can go online, and there's enormous amounts of information. We, in the department, have stopped putting that information, we used to have it on a website. But you need to keep, the accuracy of it needs to be really watchdogged. And so we agreed through, again, the homeschool advisory committee, that the best way to do it is to have it go to the, to Chris Hamilton's group, and that group, it's the more up-to-date, active website. So we offer that.
Time for us to look at Representative Ingraham's. Do we need?
Yeah, we can look at that. Can I say something while I'm sharing with you? It's up for anyone here a minute ago. This amendment and the legislation doesn't require a discussion. There's no requirement in here for discussion. All it is, is a requirement that a plan be submitted. So if the intent, and I'm trying to get to the intent of everyone here, if the intent is to make sure that the parent fully understands what they're getting into, and that the parent is prepared in teaching the child, so that the child, why don't we just require, ask that prior to homeschooling, a parent spend an hour with the superintendent of schools or, you know, the parties that are included here, the DOE, the resident superintendent or principal of the non-public school, just require that they sit down and go through a discussion. Again, new homeschool only, no approval needed. So that what, what we're trying to get at is that there's some feeling of comfort.
I'm sorry, I missed your last comment.
Just that if the intent is to have a feeling of comfort, that the parent knows what they're getting into and that they're prepared, just ask for discussion. No approval, again, no approval needed, always in new families. He's deleting the plan section. I had to read it a couple times.
Oh, is that what that is?
Yeah.
So Section 3 is the date affected by.
Thank you for that. Because I was going to start scratching around for my original.
Yeah, I don't have my original.
Okay, so he just deletes.
Can I ask, I'd like to ask someone during curriculum, and I.
I'm sorry, Mike Capitale.
Mike Capitale, that's, I thought that's who you were, I wasn't sure.
Sorry.
Could you talk a little bit about curriculum?
Yeah. I can appreciate Representative Rouse's amendment. I still would really ask what is it that we're trying to solve. I was part of a state for years in homeschool under that law that required very detailed curriculum to be presented at the beginning of the year and revised quarterly, and with quarterly reports each quarter to the district. And if you think you have problems now, you will have an incredible number of problems when those curriculums start to be submitted, because I guarantee you, every single district has their own view and will have their own view about what is acceptable and what is not acceptable, as this committee will, as educators, my wife's a professional educator, my daughter is. And they will disagree on what is acceptable and what is not acceptable. Further, today, in the law, as should be, we have only the standard of educational progress to really show whether a kid has done good. I mean, I want to see if my kids, you know, have made progress in math and reading and writing, and I want to see that they had some progress in being articulate or not. What happens, the tendency that happens, and it happened all over the state, this was New York, when parents submitted curriculum, is the tendency of the district was always to try and hold the parent to the standard of what was submitted as a curriculum. Did you teach what you said you were going to teach? And the beauty of homeschooling is that you can revise that based upon the kid's learning styles, like, is he auditory, is he kinesthetic, is he visual? And begin to mold that as the parent gains, you know, experience with the child, and the child gains experience in their learning behaviors and so forth. And what happens inevitably is you create for yourself a new set of problems. One of the biggest complaints that teachers have in this state and every state across the Union is that they have to teach to a test. And that is the tendency we go to, because it's a convenient mechanism to try and look at a standard. But that is not today the standard of how to evaluate whether a kid has made progress or not. So that would be my fear, is that you would, no matter how detailed you were, and New York's law was extremely detailed, no matter how detailed you want it to be or clear, you could never be clear enough to handle the number of subjective opinions you will have as to what is and what is not acceptable. And then I would ask, what is the purpose of submitting the curriculum? So that you could see if the parent taught to it? So that you could see if they were prepared? What is it? I would submit to you that evaluation is a far better tool to see how a student is doing than a planned curriculum, especially for first-time homeschoolers. Ms. Tenny?
We're going back. Mike, have those kinds of problems existed in New Hampshire? I mean, we're just going back to where we were, only a compromise to where we are, once, instead of every year.
Right.
And we're not anywhere near New York. So did those problems exist two years ago?
Where the participating agent was a school district, yes. Not where they were in a non-public school.
I didn't, we didn't have a lot of feedback that way in the department.
Representative Carson have 11 o'clock appointment for this, or she has already? I know. Excuse me. A member of the audience handed me some information, it's being copied now, so when Ann brings it back, everybody will.
I think I'm looking for some guidance here. I'd like for you to be able to vote on anything that we're going to vote on, and I don't know quite which way to go, whether to vote first on bringing these two amendments together, or to take them each singly. What is your?
My, I think Representative Rouse brought up some very good points with the amendment that she brought in. Again, my concern is, I really think we need to sit down with people before we do anything. I understand the need to bring in a plan, to have that into legislation, but again, I think we might be a little premature. We need to sit down, and we need to talk with the stakeholders. We need to find out from them, I mean, we heard a lot of testimony, as to what is the best thing to do. I can live with, prior to the commencements of such a program, I think it's important that they do notify, from a legal standpoint, that there is some sort of notification to someone, that folks are homeschooling their children. And, I mean, even with the program, we heard testimony that parents said, "Well, I'll just pull something off the internet and I'll just give it to them, and that's going to be the end of it." So is that the way we want it to go? Do we want to encourage that? And I think we have to be very careful with that particular section about what we as a state are going to require from homeschooling parents, and that's why, again, I think it's important that we bring them to the table, find out what's the best way to do this, what can we all live with, and try to find some sort of compromise that will address everyone's And again, I'm just really a big advocate for having a subcommittee, and putting the legislators on the committee, so on the advisory council, so we know what's going on. And hopefully, we can learn a lot, we can, we brought up a lot of questions as legislators here this morning, things that we didn't know about homeschooling, so it would be an educational experience for all of us to know how our homeschooled children are actually being schooled. So that's my.
I think I would encourage us to take a vote on merging the two amendments with some added language. Actually, added language that I mentioned earlier, that would not just say prior to commencement, but would say within five business days of commencement, that would be a way for emergency situations if a parent felt it was an emergency.
My concern, though, is, and again, it has to do back to, we're not just talking about one particular set of statutes, to the truancy law. If a parent, there's a, say there's a situation on Monday, the parents feel it's an emergency situation, they pull their child out, they need to decide whether or not they want to homeschool, they can't afford private school, and they contact homeschool, the Department of Education, the homeschool associations, "How do I do this? Can I do this?" You know, and they still are keeping the child home. I know it's up to 20 days, but after a few days, when a child isn't in school, the parents start getting phone calls. Do we need to take a look at that? Is there a safety net in here that we need to put into place? While a parent, again, if it is an emergency situation, that's going to protect everyone involved, with the parent, the child, and the district. Thank you. I don't know, is 10 days reasonable?
That 10 business days?
10 business.
Two weeks, basically?
Yeah, to give folks two weeks to decide. Is that reasonable?
It's more reasonable, yeah. I mean, then five is, you don't even decide even a week to kind of figure out. That's pretty short.
Right.
Good idea.
So 10 days, is 10 days good?
I'm wondering if maybe we need some time to digest what we have spoken here about. And the reason I'm saying that is, we could meet Wednesday at 10, because we don't have sessions for.
What about 11?
Could you get your question? Well, we could recess, we could recess this to date and time certain, Wednesday at 11, this room, and I will see that it gets posted. And maybe we can digest what we need to do before we vote on, because I see this as a very important piece of whatever it is we're doing in legislation.
Right, and I agree with you, Mr. Chairman.
Because it's policy, and we need to get it as right as possible.
Does the executive session been scheduled?
Next week, tomorrow, that's our really, that's our last possible week, for instance. Just, you know, I'm thinking about the, sorry.
No, go ahead.
About the 10 days. I mean, that's two weeks of school. If it really is a cover for a truancy issue, that could be two weeks of missed instruction. So it's.
Yeah, again, that's my argument for the study committee, Madam Chair, that, you know, there are a lot of issues here, and we want to make sure that what we're doing is the right thing, rather than doing something impulsively.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll meet Wednesday?
We'll recess until Wednesday at 11.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Sounds great, thank you.
And thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you for taking the time and for speaking.
Can I ask a question off the record and outside of this?
Sure.
Just personally, I mean, what I'm concerned about is, this looks good in theory, but I'm wondering how this will work in practice. I mean, if everybody walks into the building with a different idea about how much regulation, running the game from none to negative to some, to too much.
You mean how much is needed?
Where are we going to, where, what are legislators going, what kind of action points are legislators going to have a problem with? There's never going to be full consensus.
Yeah, I don't think there's anyone today on the Home Education Advisory Council that would say, I'm not sure where Representative got that feeling that it's anti-regulation. We're not anti-regulation. What we want to make sure is when we make regulations, that they're necessary regulations, because as you know, you know, unnecessary regulations cause other problems way down the road, especially three, five years down the road, when you forget what the original legislative intent was. And being part of New York, where parents have to be extremely diligent about the curriculum that they were going to submit, I mean, really, as a parent, I spent hours and hours on every single kid submitting that and then revealing it every quarter.
But that's what teachers do, too.
Right, but it never stopped, especially to showing educational progress. All it did was create conflict, you know, it was, and caused, because the districts had to now hire somebody that could understand the thing, looked at it, evaluated, contacted the parent.
I guess my point is, is that just gives the body no power, say.
To regulate, you're saying, okay.
Right. But my understanding is that these kind of commissions, they're sort of an unwritten understanding that laws will come out of, the dialogue that occurs. And I, you know, we do actually already have a Home Education Advisory Council.
I think if you added a provision, perhaps, that, you know, made them responsible to present recommendations to the education committee, you know, to solve whatever issues came forward, it might have a little bit more teeth. But for you guys to actually say, "Okay, what did you come up with and why?", you know, perhaps, you know, that would help you.
Because I'm also concerned about data. The data gathering on both ends is, to me, not representative of what I'm going, I would need to know as a legislator, to be able to make positive.
Impact.
Yeah, move positively.
Yeah, I mean.
That's a concern. How can you, you know?
There's nothing to prevent us. You know, one thing we talked about with Roberta often was being able to present or form out a PIA, a council that, or a subcommittee, or whatever you want to call it.
Mentioned that, I don't know a PIA. Oh.
Oh, maybe she did, yeah.
Got it.
Where we would actually be able to sit down with superintendents, either one-on-one or as a group, and actually be able to field some of the questions that they had, make recommendations, help them, which is what Roberta does on a regular basis, anyway. But I would love to be able to do that and see, because I think the large majority of superintendents want to do the right thing. There's a couple out there that, you know, have predisposed opinions, but they'll always have that in every, you know, every walk of life, right? But by and large, they want to do a sincere, good job. And I would love for us to hear their individual, and the principals' individual feedback. So I don't think we, would hurt for methods of getting that data, plus you've got a tremendous amount of work out there being done about homeschoolers. Anyway, there's organizations like Homeschool Research, headed up by Dr. Brian Ray, who does exhaustive, exhaustive studies that are already paid for, on homeschoolers and the demographics and things like that you can also map against. All I'm saying is there's some mechanisms that we could deploy to get some good, you know, real good feedback of what's going on in the state.
After listening to you, I'm wondering if we are going at this backwards. Rather than structuring a plan, structure an evaluation system.
That's part of it, I mean, that, and that's why it really should be studied. What is the problem? No one knows, I mean, we've recessed this hearing, but we're still talking.
Yeah, we're still talking.
But no one knows what the problem is. And if you have an issue with notice, I can agree that change some of the notice laws. And if you have an issue with notice, I can agree that change some of the notice laws. Change that now, take a look at what you have going and where you actually need to change something. It's been two years that there hasn't been a plan. Why are we all of a sudden rushing that we need to change it? We're not even sure what needs to be done. And so that, I think that if you do it in a thoughtful way, you may come out with something that may be beneficial to the students.
The other side of that coin is why did we change it in the first place? It didn't seem.
I wasn't here. It's been done. You can't go back and say, why?
No, no, but I'm just saying it, you know, it's, I don't know why it was.
But it's been done. So now, if you want to go back.
That's why 500 people said.
Thanks for taking the time.
But if nobody ever looks at the plan, but if nobody ever looks at the plan or approves it or anything, the way the bill said, I mean, it just doesn't make sense.
That's why you should take a look and see what really, what is it that you're trying to accomplish and sketch, and develop something that meets your goals.
Exactly. I mean, I would much rather see some kind of evaluation at the end to see how the homeschoolers compare on a general thing.
But if it is being used as a cover for child abuse, it's too late.
Oh, yeah.
So you've got to get in front and in the back. They probably like the child.
Your child. That is great.
What's preventative for you if you get abused then?
I, this isn't preventing abuse, but it's allowing it. And.
No, it isn't. No, it isn't.
Well, then that happens, that happens to four-year-olds.
I do work in this area. It has been used as a cover of child abuse. And that's what is underlying.
But we have child abuse laws. I mean, you're going to have to.
Homeschooling, I just put my hand in the air. I think homeschooling, and our system evaporates. The child labor laws are ignored, the abuse laws are ignored. Amongst only that little tiny percentage, it's not you, by the way, but it's those people who are now being enabled to abuse their children. And those children are not here in this room.
So why don't we pass regulations on for you?
But those children would be abused whether they were attending school or not.
Homeschooling, however, is a very effective cover.
But it's no more effective than self.
I'm saying that the minimal regulation we had before got eliminated in 2006. And I've seen evidence of child labor laws being ignored within homeschooling coverage. I think it's wrong.
It has statistics for abuse. I'd like to see statistics. I have friends that have kids on the way around.
I'm typical with my compliance.
I'm sorry. But the defendant of the school.
You would have such a good system being misused. And it is.
Well, I'll tell you, she was right. It's a public school. I told my daughter on a public school. Because they weren't saying the way they should. My other daughter's getting shy and interact. So go run with that one. I'm sorry. Now I'm in debt of the law. It's a private school.
It happens in all school systems, not just how much every year. But that's in charge of your well. That's what I asked for this distance.